Good evening, Merry Christmas, and welcome to the December 15th, 2022 meeting of the Rutherford County, I almost said Regional Planning Commission, but this is the County Commission. If you would stand with us, please, our Commissioner Chaplain Romel McMurray will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Testing. Now it's on. Real quick, before I do a quick prayer, I just want to do a quick recognition to say thank you on the behalf of the County Commission to the backbone, those individuals of our county, our law enforcement individuals, our EMTs, our firefighters, our educators, and all county employees. So as we go into this new year, we just want to say thank you to all, so let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this wonderful day. We know that you are the one that allows us to breathe on a daily basis. We know that this is a season where we celebrate the birth of our Lord Jesus Christ. Some may say that it's just about, all about gifts, but we know that you are the gift and the reason for the season. I ask that you be with families that may be struggling this season due to loved ones that are no longer here, or without a family around, or just financially struggling. Give them the comfort in knowing that you are always there. I ask that you continue to bless all the organizations within our community that provides aid to those that are in need. And as this is our final County Commission meeting for the year of 2022, I ask that you inject a renewed mind and spirit among us all for the upcoming New Year so that we continue to serve the people. And it's in your name that we pray, amen. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Three white stars on a field of blue, God keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee.
Thank you. You may be seated. Our County Clerk Lisa Crowell is attending a graduation, I think it's a grandson's graduation tonight, and in her stead, Amy Wells will be taking over, and I think with a lot of help from Rick Spence, so if you don't mind, Amy, please call the roll.
Commissioner Oliver.
Present.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Rather.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Kuch.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Paul Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Irvin.
Here.
Commissioner Craig.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Chairman Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner McMurray.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serenyo.
Here.
Twenty-one present.
Thank you. This time I'll call on our Chairman Pro Tim Trey Gooch for the reading and approval of our last month's meeting minutes. Commissioner Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The clerk's office has put together minutes. I have read those and approved them. I find everything to be in order. My motion is to dispense with the reading and accept the minutes as presented.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve the minutes from our November meeting. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition, motion to approve carries. Thank you. This time, I've asked Brian Cumby, he is the Director of our Health Department, to come and give us a brief update on things that are happening, especially with the flu and COVID and those type of things. I'll need a motion to suspend the rules. Commissioner Dodd.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Cumby.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission. I've been asked to join you tonight to give a brief status update on respiratory viruses in our community, where we stand as we enter these winter months, and also to point to some measures that we have at our disposal to protect ourselves. In particular, I would like to cover a recent talk about a tripuldemic. Now, when people speak of a tripuldemic, they're not talking about a newly discovered disease, they're referring to three pathogens that we are already familiar with, and that would be RSV, influenza, and COVID-19. We find ourselves in a situation where these three viruses are circulating at the same time, and the concern is that a large enough spike from one or more of these could seriously burden our hospitals and ICUs. Now with COVID, since September, the community level of COVID-19 in Rutherford County has remained low, according to CDC data. And while the virus is still very much present, positivity rates, cases, and hospitalizations have been relatively consistent. In Rutherford County, forty-nine point eight percent of our population have been fully vaccinated, and sixty-four percent have had at least one dose of the vaccine. While recent reports show that COVID-19 cases are rising nationally, our local cases today are still lower than they were in August, and only recently have begun to trend upward. Now, RSV, or Respiratory Syncytial Virus, is a common respiratory virus that usually causes mild cold-like symptoms. Most people recover from that in a week or two, but RSV can be serious, especially for small children and older adults. RSV is the most common cause of pneumonia in infants in the United States. In Rutherford County, our highest level of RSV cases occurred in late September and early October. In this spike, over half of those cases recorded were children under the age of six. The good news here is that RSV reports in Rutherford County have been trending downward since early November, and they continue to do so. Now, the flu, this is the area of particular concern. The flu season has arrived earlier this year compared to the last four or five years. Flu-like illness in Rutherford County started trending upward in early to mid-October, just after RSV. And while RSV peaked and then declined after about six weeks, flu numbers continue to rise, and according to CDC, flu activity in Tennessee is still among the highest in the nation. So the question hanging out there is, since it started early, will it end early? And the only answer we can give with any certainty is that we just don't know. It may begin to decline and recede until next season, or it could sustain at high levels and put us in for a long, hard winter. That brings us to how we can protect ourselves, and fortunately, we do have effective tools at our disposal. First, for COVID-19 and flu, we have vaccines available for anyone six months of age or older. They're given free at our Health Department daily. The new bivalent booster for COVID-19 is targeted at the most common variants, and has been shown to be highly effective. The current flu vaccine has also been very well matched against the prevalent strain of influenza, according to the CDC, and both are very likely to prevent serious illness and hospitalizations. So if you are personally still considering a flu vaccine, it takes around two weeks to reach full effectiveness, so you could get it tomorrow and still be well protected for Christmas and New Year's Eve. If you have questions, concerns, or even hesitation about vaccines, we urge you to talk to your primary care provider or your family doctor. Public health recommendations by nature are very broad, but no one knows your personal situation or health history like your trusted physician. If you don't have a primary care doctor, maybe make a resolution for New Year's to establish with one and build that ongoing relationship. Now, in addition to vaccines, we also have good, sound hygiene, or the common sense approach. Respiratory viruses, they spread in many of the same ways, so that age-old advice that your mother or your grandmother gave you still holds true. Wash your hands frequently and use soap. Viruses hate soap, and we all get in a hurry sometimes, and we just get our hands wet, but the experts recommend twenty seconds under the sink. Cover your cough, it's good manners and good hygiene. Try to cough into your sleeve or hanker shift tissue, not your hands. Clean and sanitize areas, frequently touched objects like doorknobs, desktops, remote controls, and cell phones. Try not to touch your eyes, nose, or mouth, it's very hard to do, but those are entry points, and that's how we get sick. And if you are feeling sick, stay home. If someone you know is sick, encourage them to stay home. And finally, we do continue to face a bit of the unknown, and that can be worrisome, but we should be reassured by the fact that we have both the best tools available to modern science, and we have the tried and true good advice from our parents and our grandparents to help us protect ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Oliver.
I do have a question regarding your report on the COVID numbers. Since they're not really being reported, how do you really know what the status is because they're not reporting or tracing or any of that?
Right. Reporting has changed a great deal since the height of the pandemic, largely because personal testing became widely available, but we still do have methods. You know, in larger cities, they actually test the wastewater, and they can extrapolate from that and make very accurate, you know, judgments from that. Also, we get reporting in from different places, you know, like emergency rooms have a reporting mechanism that the state can access, and also, you know, even places like Walgreens and things of that nature. So the CDC, you know, pulls those together and makes their best conclusion.
Thank you. Commissioner Rather.
Percentage-wise, COVID, RSV, and the flu in Rutherford County, which is where we at percentage-wise with all three of those?
Percentage-wise, okay, I would say, you know, the most concerning one right now would be flu. That's a little harder to track. We do use the emergency room reporting system like that, but it's a little hard to track in real time. But if, let's see if I have any actual data on the... Most of my available data is, you know, is about vaccine utilization and things of that nature, but following the trends and the spikes, it does appear that RSV has trended downward. COVID is consistent, present, but consistent, and then flu is the one that has really taken a rise and not yet shown signs of coming down. So I would say flu is most concerning. Thank you for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Cumby. Appreciate you being here.
Yes, sir.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Resolution of recognition for Oakland football team, Commissioner Robert P., Chairman Robert P. I'll sit up here.
You know, this is getting to be a habit, and to tell you the truth, I like it. I've learned some things, this being the third time coming, so it usually takes me about three times to learn something, but I'm inviting Commissioner Harris and also Chairman Phillips. We basically surround Oakland school. Oakland school is in my district, so I have the honor of basically reading this, but I'd like to invite Chairman Harris to come over and say a few words. He actually coaches football himself, so. I'll also offer Chairman Phillips a chance to say something, too.
Can Oakland players and coaches come up, please? I'm gonna say D. All right, I've been a commissioner going on five years, this is my third time up here. Most of y'all know that me and Kevin are very close friends. Love you. One of the things, football, you know, in life, we all have different things that intrigues us, inspires us, we want to achieve, you know, that's art, math, science, farming, guns, you know, things like that. To me, for me, and everybody up here, it's football. I mean, it's something that is life to us, and it's something that's so, you know, special to us, it gives so much to us, it takes away. And the brotherhood that we have as coaches, and some of these coaches I've known for years, is how close we are, and to dominate in something that you are so combined with is just unbelievable. I'm gonna say a few things, I want to get out some stats first because I think it's just unbelievable. For the first time in six A history of high school football, Oakland High School has three-peated. It's never been done before. Three years in a row, state championship. In three seasons, their record is forty-four and one. They have eight state region titles, fifty-eight state region wins, sixty-five state home wins, and out of sixteen thousand high school football teams in the country, Oakland's in the top ten. Coach Creasy has won ten and seven overall record. That's a number to some people, to me, that's domination, and that's just unbelievable what he's done and turned it around. Football in Rutherford County is considered the SEC. Now, what people don't know what that means is, that's the top conference in football. Rutherford County is the top place to play football, and more talent has come through Rutherford County than any county in Tennessee. And that's one of the things, and Oakland dominates it, absolutely dominates it. And I got to tell you this one story, and I'll get out of here, me and Kevin were talking, and Kevin just won the state championship in 2021, dominated. Unbelievable athletes, I mean, some big-time players, and all of them graduated, and they had these kids back, and it was in the press that it was a rebuilding year. Kevin, defensive coordinator who's with him in most of all of his state championships, got a job working somewhere else. So not only did he lose his defensive coordinator, he lost D1 players, and they called it a rebuilding year. And these guys came and they took that a little bit, I think, serious, took it a little serious, and they absolutely dominated again. So I'm gonna turn this over for the resolution here. Oakland High School, David Watson. I want to tell y'all, thank y'all, we're proud of y'all, and I know this is some old man sitting up here talking, but I promise you, I promise you this, in twenty, forty, maybe a hundred years from now, a good chance, a hundred years from now, somebody's gonna pull your name up, and you got some kid or grandkid, and they're gonna look up and say, who is my daddy, who is my granddaddy, who's my great-granddaddy, and your name will be here forever in the history of this court. So I thank you and appreciate you, and congratulations.
Chairman Phillips. Just want to say one thing, as most of you commissioners know, I own a retirement home, vacation home in towns in Tennessee. You know where that is, Coach? Twenty minutes from Mariville High School, so it's a lot of pride and pleasure for me to be from Rutherford County and spend some time in East Tennessee, and now Mariville is the one that's talking about Oakland all the time, and trying to emulate what Oakland is doing, and I'm proud of you guys. Thank you.
Well, like I said, this is the third time, so I've learned a few things, and one of the things that I've learned is I can't pronounce names very well. Now, when you grow up with a name like P, name-calling doesn't hurt you, you kind of get used to that, but what I'm gonna do when I get to the part where I'm naming the players, I'm gonna ask you gentlemen, you players, to step up to this microphone, we'll swap sides, and I'm gonna let you say your name, that way we know we get it right. So like I said, third time's the charm, and something else I want to mention, too, well, two other things. Chairman Harris kind of touched on it about how good this county is. You know, the shame of it is, and we've always said, we've got good teams all the way through this county. We've had state championships, of course, Riverdale, Smyrna, you know, we've got other teams that are very good, and the shame of it is, we kick each other out. Now, T double S double A made a mistake, and they divided it so that Rutherford County, Riverdale went one way, and Oakland went the other, and we stomped both ends and came back in the middle, and they decided, we can't do that anymore. So they stopped doing that for obvious reasons because nobody else in the state had a chance. At least, that's my opinion. Now, the last thing I want to say is, these guys are awarded, for their hard work and their dedication, they are awarded some rings, and to get those rings costs a lot of money, and they're not gonna ask you probably, I hope you do mention it, but they need to do some fundraising. I'd like for you to reach in your back pocket and help these guys out if you see fit. But anyway, it's something that anybody out there listening, we would appreciate the help, to help fundraise these rings for these gentlemen that have worked so hard to bring this to us. Now, I'm gonna try to read this resolution, it's pretty small, so I'm gonna bring it up here where I can see it a little better. Resolution of recognition for the 2022 Oakland High School Six A State Champions, whereas in December 2022, the Oakland Patriots High School Football Team won the Six A Blue Cross Bowl State Championship and became the first team to win the Six A Championship three consecutive years. And whereas with forty-four wins and only one loss for the last three seasons, which includes eight straight regional championships, fifty-eight regional wins, forty-one straight county wins, sixty-five straight home wins, national top-ten rankings in 2022 and in 2021, and a national top-50 ranking in 2022, whereas the Oakland Patriots dominated the season under head coach Kevin Creasy, varsity staff Jeff Kent, Josh Connor, Marcus Bryson, David Watson, John Sharsh, Coach Vlad, told you I'd get around these names, Brett Roberts, Ryan Knox, Justin Roberts, Tyler Edie, and freshman staff Josh Harrison, Eric Vito, Russell Clark, Matthew Parker, Riley Malone, and Joey Mastrone-Simon. And whereas the team members are, and gentlemen, I want to start right here with you, and you can walk that way, please give your name.
Cade Hewitt.
Perry Johnson.
Keith Bowman.
Corey Smith.
CJ Pocket.
Marcus Bullard.
Cameron Floyd.
Nathan Headborne.
Max Levinsky.
Eric Taylor.
Mason Bill.
Ian Owens.
Gentlemen, thank you. Saved me from stumbling over a lot of names that I shouldn't be able to pronounce. Whereas this has been an exciting and successful season, and special commendation is due to all the team members, coaches, and Principal John Marshall, who's also in the audience, for their dedication and commitment, which made another championship possible, and for bringing this wonderful publicity to our community, and by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2022 Oakland High School Football Team and coaches for their successful year, resolved this fifteenth day of December 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution of recognition for Oakland High School. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition, motion carries.
I'd like to invite Coach Creasy to speak or say something, and also, John, if you'd like to come up, please go ahead.
All right. First off, did you see how many players couldn't reach the microphone? That just tells you what a great coaching job we did. No offense, Eric. Eric is our Blue Cross Bowl MVP, he's very humble, but I want to recognize Eric Taylor. And Cade Hewitt was up for Mr. Football, didn't win it, but he was still dominated, that was a pretty good honor. Appreciate you guys giving me a minute with the microphone. I want to give a shout out to one of our former alumni, Hope Oliver, was a member of our Oakland End Zone Club not too long ago, her son got a full-ride scholarship and a diploma. Definitely got a degree from our Western Kentucky and also Georgia Tech, so that's a success story from our program. We want all of our guys to go to the next level and definitely get a degree, and if they so desire, play football, and a lot of these guys will play on Saturday, maybe even Sunday, but we want to first say thank you to our Lord and Savior. We know that he has definitely blessed this team, definitely went through a lot of things, and definitely want to give him all the recognition. Secondly, we want to say thank you to all the public servants out there, we know what a tough job you have, a lot of criticism, a lot of easy ways to voice people's opinions that may differ, and especially with social media. It reminds me a lot of what a football coach deals with only once a week, but also, good to see the Sheriff's Department represented out there, the Police Department. Today, I got pulled over in driver's ed. You would think, you would think three years, state champion in a row, wouldn't have to teach on the last day of school, but out by Shady Lane, we get pulled over, and we deserved it. We were going fifteen, we ran off the road. It was a great lesson, the girl in the front was in tears, but we rolled down the window and talked to the nice officer, tried to explain how our magnet might have been knocked off, that warned of a driver's ed student, and he let us go, and we were very happy, and the two in the backseat were really excited, once we swapped drivers immediately. But again, everyone has a job, and people that work for the public good, like all of you, and the nice officer, and school teachers, football coaches, we're all happy to serve the public, and we're all happy that you're still serving the public. We get a lot of people to watch us, we're watching you guys as well. We are really happy with what you've done with our county, with the city of Murfreesboro especially. We're really happy to represent our county and our city of Murfreesboro, and these guys did a heck of a job of making all of us proud to be Rutherford Countyans, and because of that, I want to give them one more round of applause. Thank you. Thank you. I am gee, on our agenda is a resolution of recognition for Ronnie Barrett. I'll call on Commissioner Chantel Sereno and Chairman Pettis Reed. I know we're gonna go with it.
Messrs, we have just seen history as far as Oakland is concerned, and their repeats and what they've done here, and what I'm getting ready to read here as far as what we're going to make recognition here in just a few minutes, it's also history for Rutherford County. And serving as president of a historical society, I was back here just a few moments ago talking with Ronnie, within this county, prior to the Civil War, we know that there were two gunmakers within Rutherford County. And of course, when the Civil War come around, those gunmakers were put into action to make more weapons and whatever, and that soon was done away with. And just last week was the one-year anniversary of the museum we have within this building for Rutherford County, and we're continually trying to put more... this building for Rutherford County, and we're continually trying to put more items and things in it, and we're trying to get one of those weapons that was produced in Rutherford County that far back to put in here to show one of those things that was made here in Rutherford County. And I was just telling Ronnie about that, that maybe someday we'll be putting this bit of history also within our, within our, our museum here, because we're in the process of adding another room to the museum. The only thing is, whenever we start putting something like that in our museum, uh, the security increases and it becomes somewhat like the Crown Jewels over in England, uh, and what we have here in Rutherford County in particular. So, but I think tonight you're looking at history, and when I get through reading this resolution, you'll understand that and see more about it. Before we begin, I would like for Commissioner Sorino to make some comments at this time. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mary. I'm so delighted and to be here and to be honored to, you know, share, uh, listen to the special, uh, person who have been recognized in, in Bradford County, in Tennessee, and also in the world, in so many country. I have read the resolution a little bit, and so understand, I'm so happy to be in the District 21, he is also in District 21 too. You know, I came from very far away from the country blouse, and it take about, uh, 21 hour to fly back to my home country. Now, I learned the history of the Rutherford County. I'm so delighted to be here and happy, and thank you so much for Mary to allow me to join Chairman Reed and Chairman Phillips, and thank you, and have a wonderful anniversary of yours, building the business until this, this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And at this time, we'll ask that the Barrett family come forward. You know, I, I asked Ronnie a while ago, I said, who's going to take your picture tonight? Because he's always been the one making everybody else's pictures all these years. Resolution of recognition for Ronnie Gene Barrett and his M-82A1 M-107 rifle. Whereas it is fitting that members of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners should recognize the exceptional success of Rutherford County, Tennessee products and individuals whose accomplishments through their extraordinary performance are designated as world renown, given credible recognition and profound impact of Rutherford County, Tennessee. And whereas one such noteworthy individual and his exceptional accomplishments is Ronnie Barrett and his Barrett Model M-82A1 M-107, a rifle born from sketches, hand drawn on a dining room table by its then 27-year-old photographer-turned-rifle designer, who was born, raised, and educated in Rutherford County, Tennessee. And whereas Ronnie Barrett has provided numerous jobs, as the M-82A1 M-107 rifle has been continuously manufactured in Rutherford County, Tennessee since its inception in 1982. And whereas the M-82A1 M-107 was the first successful 50-caliber semi-automatic rifle to be widely fielded in active military service. And whereas in the past 100 years, Ronnie Barrett became the fourth individual to have invented a rifle that was officially adopted by the United States Military. And whereas since then, the M-82A1 M-107 has been used by long-range competitive shooters and law enforcement, and has been adopted by over 70 allied countries throughout the world. And whereas Ronnie Barrett also pioneered a viable market of an entirely new classification of rifle, changing the battlefield tactics. He dominates this market, enjoys strong customer allegiance, as it is recognized as the world premier 50-caliber rifle, now on its 40th year anniversary. And whereas no stranger to accolades, the designer of the M-82A1 M-107 received the Lieutenant Colonel George Chin Award from the National Defense Industrial Association for excellent in support of American servicemen and servicewomen, and the 2006 Earnest and Young Entrepreneur of the Year in the Southeast Defense and Security category. And whereas in March 2004, the M-107 was recognized in a ceremony in Washington, D.C. by the Office of the Chief of Staff of the United States Army as one of the top 10 greatest inventions for its service. And whereas the M-82A1 M-107 was received numerous other accolades from the United States and other allied military, not only as a product, but for the astounding service of its manufacturer under unrealistic time constraints. And whereas the M-82A M-107 is on display in many of the world's major museums, it has appeared in numerous major motion pictures, countless books, magazines, and documentaries. And whereas the Barrett Model 82A1 M-107 has been designated and recognized as the official rifle of the state of Tennessee. And whereas the members of this commission find it appropriate to recognize Ronnie Barrett for his M-82A1 M-107 rifle, for its Tennessee heritage and its inclusion in defense of the United States of America and its citizens, having been carried into battle in every theater for the last 31 years. And now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this 15th day of September, 2022, does hereby extend sincere appreciation to Ronnie Gene Barrett for this dedicated service to the citizens of Rutherford County, and wish him continued success in all its endeavors. Mr. Chairman, I so move for the passage of this resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution of recognition for Ronnie Barrett. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Carr. This is quite an honor. I was, uh, never intended to stir up so much, but, uh, my mother used to tell me, Ronnie, I just can't believe all this is happening. Um, you know, it's actually 40 years for the firearms company, but, uh, as you alluded to, that as a photographer, I opened a photography studio when I was in high school, graduated in 73, and it was up on South Church Street. Uh, got my telephone number, 896-2938, and, uh, and so we started doing the gun thing, and, uh, you know, I couldn't answer at Barrett Studio anymore. You didn't know what was coming in, so we'd just say, Barretts. And then if it was a photography question, you'd take off on that. Uh, if it was a gun question, you'd go off on that. And, and I'll say 50 years later now, if you call 896-2938, you, that's still our telephone number at Barrett Firearms. So it's, uh, it's, this is quite an honor. Uh, you know, I was born here, educated here, half-raised here, for those that know me. No, I've, I've lived here all my life and have met some mighty wonderful people around the world, and, uh, and it's just been such a privilege that, uh, that I could do something like this in Rutherford County. If you could, if you can't make it here in Rutherford County, you just can't make it anywhere, brother. I'm telling you. Because it's, 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 uh, the photography studio was a blast. It was, it was great. And I think the reason, one of the things that I got chosen to do this is, is, uh, you know, I'm, I'm a little dyslexic, maybe a lot, uh, and have a lot of trouble and everything, but when God wants something done, he picks the most unlikely people to get it done. That way, you know it was God. You know? And, uh, so that's how, that's how, at 75, or at 27 years old, you know, I'll go to some of these countries, and they're telling me how they use the gun and everything. You say, you know, that was designed by a 27-year-old kid. You know, that, what? You know, it's quite a surprise. And, and so like I said, it was, uh, this was God getting things done, using the most unlikely people. I've been honored to work with so many good folks here in Rutherford County and try to get most of my stuff made here in Tennessee, all we can. And, uh, thank you, and I appreciate y'all's work, because having married, uh, somebody in politics, I, I realize what type, what y'all have to go through, and I, I'll put it mildly like that. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mayor Carr. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know about you guys, but I feel pretty good. We need to skip down, uh, I believe it's to, uh, item L, uh, for our public hearings. Uh, and I know we're a little bit late on this, but really there are, are no rezonings or anything. This is just some cleanup work, so I'll call on our, uh, call on Doug Demossi, our planning director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. Everyone's doing well tonight. As Chairman Phillips stated, we don't have any rezonings tonight, but we do have three ordinance amendments for your consideration. The first of those is for some regulations to be added into our zoning ordinance for tiny homes. The planning and engineering and building code staff both regularly receive inquiries on tiny homes. Most of these inquiries concern whether or not they're allowed, if so, how many can be placed on a lot, can tiny homes be used as accessory dwelling units or mother-in-law apartments, something similar to that. Uh, we've also been seeing a trend in more people living in campers, recreational vehicles or RVs, or even ready removable structures. These are what you would typically see on someone's lot, that's like a storage barn, Dutch barn, something like that. Uh, we've had several internal meetings on these issues, and we brought a presentation to the Planning Commission in August of this year to see if there was any interest in creating some regulations. After discussion, the Planning Commission was receptive and instructed us to go ahead and craft some regulations and to bring them forward for consideration. We did that at the Planning Commission's September 26th meeting of this year. Following that discussion, the Planning Commission asked staff to place them on the November 14th Planning Commission Agenda for a public hearing. Uh, these regulations are included with your agenda packets. Uh, I can go into as much or as little detail as you want on those, but to summarize, these regulations would allow tiny homes on permanent foundations using a part of the building code that needs to be adopted, it's called Appendix Q. That will be coming at a subsequent meeting of the County Commission, or the structure is licensed by the state of Tennessee. So we have two different definitions that we would fall on. We would regulate them the same way we do single-wide mobile homes. They'd be allowed by right if they were on properties of five acres or greater, and by special exception if they're on property less than five acres. And we also would allow them as accessory dwelling units or ADUs by special exception, as we do for single-wide mobile homes today. We've also added a definition for what we call the ready removable structures. Again, those are your Dutch barns, storage buildings that you would see in a lot, and would specifically prohibit them from being used as living units. Uh, following the discussion, the Planning Commission did have a public hearing on this. Uh, there wasn't anyone that really spoke during the public hearing. Uh, we, there was some, uh, there were some questions to clarify the difference between a manufactured tiny home and a ready removable. Uh, we did explain that ready removable structures are not meant for human occupancy, whereas manufactured tiny homes are. Uh, again, nobody came to speak during the public hearing, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing open for zoning ordinance amendment ORD 22-002. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning ordinance amendment? Susan Allen.
Good evening. I just have one question for Doug. You said one tiny home could be by right on five acres. Uh, in other localities, uh, there are groupings of tiny homes, like, you know, like a mini subdivision almost. Would that be allowed under certain conditions?
Yes.
That's all my question. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Doug, you want to make a comment on that?
Yes, to answer Ms. Allen's question, the, the regulations as they're drawn up right now would only allow for one, as she stated, regardless if it's by right or by special exception. To answer her question about the community, uh, for now, we just wanted to start small. If somebody wanted to do a tiny home community, we would probably look at that as a plan development rezoning. So they would have the ability to do that, but, uh, as time goes on and we see how this functions, that may be something that we come back to, to look at tiny home communities. But right now, we're just trying to ease our way into it.
Again, uh, we have a request from our, uh, planning department to approve zoning ordinance amendment ORD 22-002. Need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our second resolution tonight for ordinance amendments is for our mini warehouse regulations. This is in section 1103 of our zoning ordinance. Our zoning ordinance currently provides a 500-square-foot limit on the maximum unit size in a mini warehouse development. Now, that doesn't mean that the entire building is limited to 500 square feet. What we're talking about is, let's say you have a 5,000-square-foot building, the largest pod you can have in that is 500 square feet. We're starting to see developments of this type providing closed storage options for vehicles like cars, boats, and even recreational vehicles. Some of these larger vehicles cannot be stored, uh, within a 500-square-foot unit. So after doing a little bit of research on this, we proposed to the Planning Commission that we raise our minimum from 500 square feet to 750 square feet. So you see the revised regulation on your iPads in the staff comments. All the other standards for mini warehouses would remain unchanged. Uh, the Planning Commission did ask about a typical dimension for a 700-square-foot, 750-square-foot, uh, structure. There were a few different dimensions that were provided during the meeting. Again, no one came to speak during the public hearing, and the recommendation was made to approve by a unanimous vote. Again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing open for ORD 22-003, zoning ordinance amendment. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Say your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Eli Waldron, 1311 Tweedle Court, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Uh, Commissioners, if you don't know, um, the primary, uh, reason, um, you know, this is in high demand in the county is to increase unit size, is so that vehicles, as Mr. Demossi said, that are currently, um, you know, namely boats and RVs, uh, could be stored inside. Um, currently, the, pretty much the only way they can be stored, you know, if a, if a resident of the county lived in a neighborhood where their HOA restricted, um, you know, the storage of these vehicles outside in their driveway, um, the only way they'd be able to, be able to store it at a mini storage complex right now would either be outside on a parking spot or under a covered roof. And both of these, um, options offer limited, um, you know, limited, uh, they're both going to get weathered by both the sun and, you know, all the elements. And so, um, even if you have just a roof, you're still going to get fading and damage that comes on at least one side of that unit. And so if we're able to increase unit size up to 750 square feet, we'd be able to provide fully enclosed units for the residents of the county. Um, and as these vehicles continue to get more expensive, um, the residents or the consumers of these vehicles, um, want to prolong their lifespan, um, so as their investment in these vehicles, um, can last as long as possible. So I would greatly support your, um, vote on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have a recommendation, a recommendation from, uh, our Planning Commission to approve zoning ordinance amendment ORD 22-003. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Mr. Demossi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our final public hearing tonight, uh, involves another ordinance amendment to remove a portion of our current zoning code regarding variable lot size and adequate infrastructure in the RL zone, which I'll explain here in just a moment. If you look on the map that's behind me, uh, or above me, I suppose, the, uh, the area that we're going to be talking about is the area that you see in yellow. Okay, now, that is kind of the, basically the outskirts of the, of county is what we're talking about. That- That area is what is designated as residential low density or RL. That was applied to property in the unincorporated county that was identified as being rural under our county's comprehensive plan. The zoning ordinance was adopted with several provisions back in 2013 to allow for increased density should property in that zone, the RL, again, that area in yellow, meet certain water and either sewer or step system requirements. It's become apparent to staff over the last several years that more factors need to be considered for increased density other than water and sewer service or step capacity. For example, development patterns in the area should be considered, as well as the conditions of roads, current traffic patterns, and things of that nature. Following discussion of this item at the Planning Commission, we were instructed to bring a possible amendment for a public hearing. What we are proposing is to delete section 404A and just mark it as reserved. Subdivisions with approved preliminary plans under the existing rules, again, if they qualified for the density bonus, would not be affected by this develop, by this amendment, excuse me. They would be considered legally established non-conforming uses. This would only apply to new subdivisions moving forward should this application or amendment be adopted. The Planning Commission did have some questions about how this would affect density. We responded that higher densities would only be allowed with a rezoning application, again, in the RL areas. This would give staff more oversight on higher densities in those areas. The observation was also made that this concern has been brought up several times during the first round of community engagement we've had with our county's comprehensive plan update. Again, nobody came to speak during this public hearing, and after this discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi at this time? Thank you. This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for zoning ordinance amendment ORD 22-004. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have a recommendation from our Planning Commission to approve zoning ordinance amendment ORD 22-004. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of this ordinance amendment.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve and a second. Any comments?
Oh.
Commissioner P.
Normally what I'm seeing, and since you've got all that yellow up there, a lot of my district is yellow, most of the development that I've been seeing has, has gone to a PUD. Do you want to speak to that and how this would interact with people requesting the PUDs?
Yes, well, as far as someone's ability to request a PUD, it doesn't change anything. What this does is really just limit somebody in the RL zone to have a higher density by right. If they wanted to ask for higher density with a planned development because they wanted to have smaller lots, reduce setbacks, those kind of things, they could still do that. But those are things that we would consider during the Planning Commission's review of that that would come before you. So in that regard, that, nothing changes there. Did that answer your question? Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Once again, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries, ORD 22-004, zoning ordinance amendment. Mr. Demossi, anything else?
Just real quick, just to say, you know, end of another year, just appreciate the working relationship with everybody, looking forward to a continued relationship in 2023. So Merry Christmas, and I hope you all have a happy and safe New Year as well.
Thank you. Getting back to our agenda, item H, public comments. I have no one listed, but Rachel's been out for a couple of days. Anyone sign up to, for public comments? Seeing no one, we'll move along. Item I, elections and confirmations. Chairman Pettish read.
Under elections and confirmations, begin with item one, election of our notaries. Listing of the notaries may be found in your iPads, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the elections of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the list of notaries. Any questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item two, steering would like to confirm the reappointment of David Puckett and Thomas Hartley to the Correctional Works Center Board. Terms to expire January 2025. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
And a second to approve David Puckett and Thomas Hartley to the CWCB. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries.
Item three, steering wishes to confirm Commissioner Craig Harris to the Audit Committee. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second to approve Craig Harris to the Audit Committee. Any questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries.
Item four, steering would like to confirm the mayor's appointment of Steve Smith to the E911 Board. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second to approve Steve Smith to the E911 Board. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries.
Item five, we wish to announce one vacancy on the Lineball Library Board to fill a retiring member seat. Term to expire August 2023. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Chairman Reed. Item J, resolution to approve our consent agenda. Chairman Protim Traguch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I find everything on the consent agenda to be appropriate. There's been no request to remove anything, and so my motion is to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented and a second, Commissioner P. Any questions? Yes, Commissioner McAdoo.
On number 11 on mine, it's got 2023, 2034 meeting calendar. Is that correct, or is that a typo?
We, we've decided this year, Commissioner McAdoo, to do it for 10, 12 years in advance. And I'm pretty sure you'll still be here. It's 2024. 2024, thank you for catching that. Any other questions?
I do have a question. Did you mean for Health and Ed to have a meeting on December 26?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Did you mean for Health and Ed to have a meeting on December 26?
No. That's a regular scheduled meeting, but Health and Ed is not meeting this month, so it is, it's. December meeting has been canceled. Good catch. Other questions? One particular, we, we had a question on the Purchasing Committee, which is number 16. All that's on there is the Purchasing Committee minutes. And I understand that's regularly on the consent agenda. Any other questions? For this, we'll be on the board. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Motion to approve the consent agenda passes. K, any unfinished business? I don't think we have any. Public hearings, we've taken care of. We're getting into our committee reports. M, reports by standing committees, Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. Chairman Robert P.
First item is item M1A, but I want to take this time to ask Mayor Carr to actually present the first item, if that's okay with you. And I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This particular item is for a professional services for the Tennessee General Assembly regarding some initiatives this county commission and the office of the mayor have undertaken in the last several years without the appropriate and necessary professional help that is required to seek the necessarily, necessary regress given a bill that passed in 2006 that created an unequal environment between how the cities and the counties funded their, their growth. And so what this is meant to do is meant to provide an avenue so that we can solicit those services and hopefully have a little bit more parity with our city counterparts about how we fund for growth, and I'll be glad to take questions. I'm not trying to be obtuse, I'm trying to be brief.
Mr. Harris, Chairman Harris.
Mayor Carr, is this concerning the, looking into a lobby, lobby?
Yes, it is.
Okay, my question to you is, you've, you've issued RFPs.
Correct.
Okay, who's going to oversee those RFPs?
Well, initially, the RFPs will be opened on 2:00 on December 19th, and they will be read aloud in a public forum, and then those RFPs were reviewed by myself and Dr. Sullivan, the Rutherford County School Board Director, and we will probably, depending on the number of RFPs, Commissioner, we will select three that we will then subsequently interview, and then we will take the finalist for that, out of that selection process, come back to the purchasing committee for approval and final approval before this body.
Okay, do you have any problem when you have your final two to address the steering committee? To my understanding, and I do not think, I'm not trying to put you on the spot here because I think there's some problem with confidentiality.
There is, and thank you for, and thank you for bringing that up, because the nature of this particular profession is that this, I do not want Rutherford County to hire a professional services to lobby on its behalf without knowing who the client list of that particular firm is, so that we can ensure there's no conflict of interest. That is, I take that very, very seriously, having served in the Tennessee General Assembly. The only way we're going to, I'm going to get at that information is to have a very candid and private, but private conversation with the prospective clients in this regard. And so I have asked Dr. Sullivan to participate in that because Dr. Sullivan and the Rutherford County School Board is going to participate in this investment with the Rutherford County Commission if it decides to move forward. So there will be two of us doing the interviews, but it's to ask those questions quite directly that we can get straight answers to that we probably will, they would decline to answer in a public setting. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, like I said, I'm not, I get a little bit of, you know me, I ask questions, I usually know the answer to, but I think confidentiality was something that I was concerned with, because normally, we put these things through steering or through the, the appropriate committees, just like we do public works and all that. But I have looked into this, and I have seen where the confidentiality is a major problem.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to clear that up in case any Commissioners want to know why it doesn't go through a committee and all that stuff.
Well, and I appreciate, I really appreciate you bringing that up, because the office of the mayor takes transparency very, very seriously. And so to be candid, we're trying to thread a little bit of a needle here by being responsible on part of the applicants for responding to the RFP, yet making sure that the office of the mayor and the county commission are being as transparent as humanly possible. And, and so we're trying to kind of thread the needle here a little bit, and this was a solution that myself and the purchasing committee came up with, hopefully to accommodate as best we can both interests.
Other questions? Mr. Oliver.
Question. Could you speak more to the relationship between your, your office and the school board? You said the school board would be a part of this?
Yes, ma'am. So when we initially, when this one initially was gone through steering committee through Chairman Harris's committee, it, the school board and I realized that they also had an interest, and I, we didn't realize, the office of the mayor, and I don't even think the county commission realized, that they were also, independently of us, looking at soliciting a similar service, because they have several issues that they're concerned about with regard to education in this next Tennessee General Assembly session. And so I reached out to Dr. Sullivan, I said, you know, we're proceeding with this, we've come out of steering committee with a 70-0 vote, we're going to budget, we feel optimistic about the outcome there. He said, it's interesting you say that, Mayor Carr, we are looking into doing this. I said, well, here's our rationale for doing it. Would you like to piggyback on top of our initiative with regard to interviewing prospective lobbying firms or consulting firms that can represent us in Nashville? He said, absolutely. And so they will, and so I thought since they were going to be a part of partnering with us, it only made sense that he would participate in that interview. And so I invited him to participate in the interview, Commissioner, and he's accepted.
Other questions? This has gone through steering, it's gone through budget, and it's gone through purchasing. Commissioner Rather.
I just want to make a comment. Years ago, when I was on Public Works, I think Chairman Kush was in there. We talked about lobbyists. Those around us have them. And we can't compete doing what we've always done. If you always do what you've always done, you always get what you always got. We've got to change that, and the, the school board being involved, the whole county is involved, and it's for the best. I am wholehearted for transparency. Now, we, I'm, I serve on public safety. There are things that we don't need to be that transparent about, because we're, we're telling the bad guys what we're doing. There are things that need to be held close to the vest. I, I get that, and I, I think this, we talked about this in steering, I think this is a tremendous, tremendous step forward for Rutherford County and the folks we serve. Thank you.
Commissioner Rather, any other comments? This resolution, M1A, has three items on it, but we're going to take this one separate, if that's okay. Commissioner P.
All right, I'll go ahead and read the first one. Be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. The county mayor increased expenditures for other contracted services, $100,000, and a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $100,000. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second to approve that first item on M1A. Other questions? For this, we'll be on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'm going to continue with item M1A. The second one is from, for OIT, and is to increase expenditures of data process services for $21,000, and a decrease in unassigned balance, balance of 21,000. This is for the 20 North Building Server, where we've had to move the electrical lines because of condensation. I'm going to go ahead and mention the last one, which is the jail, and this is a recognized increased revenues for the SCAPAP grant, S-C-A-P, and other directed federal revenues of $61,068. And that would be also a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $9,865. Other contracted services, $9,865. And the SCAPAP building improvements would be $61,068. Resolve this 15th day of December 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the final two items on budget item M1A. Any questions? I'll be on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is M1B, and this is actually an accounting correction where we had some funds that were put into the incorrect account, and it's being changed, there's no new money here. Resolution be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Drug Control Fund and Special Purpose Fund be amended as follows. To correct the coding of prior year revenue received from the federal government and from drug enforcement, a decrease in restricted fund balance of $175,569, and increase expenditures transferred to other funds, $175,569. Under the Sheriff's Office, that'll be an increase in revenue transfers in of $175,569. Confidential, this is increased expenditures of confidential, $75,569, and a data processing equipment of $60,000, and motor vehicles, $40,000. Resolve this 15th day of December 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Item M1B. Any questions? This will be on the board, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Motion passes.
Item M1C, this has actually got to do with the distribution of some money that was left over from donated money from the Smyrna Ready Mix to our schools. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Educational Capital Projects Fund be amended according to the schedule attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 15th day of December 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? This will be on the board, Item M1C, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, our next meeting will be January the 5th, 2023. I told you, third time, that's the charm, so I remember to come up with our date. I also want to mention that on your desk, you should find a copy of the Budget Calendar, so anyone that's wanting to can certainly come to those meetings with us. Something else I'll mention, too, is a reminder that all of us have to file our financial report, or ethics report, I guess it is, by January 31st with the Election Commission. And lastly, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I don't think I'll get a chance to say that again before the end of the term. Mayor, do you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, may I? We have some unfinished business, Mr. Chairman, under unfinished business with help, excuse me, with budget and finance. I failed at the last budget meeting to bring to the body an appropriation for Ford F-250 Truck for Mr. Adam Dodd in maintenance. And I want to take this opportunity real quick, if I may. As a result of this request from Mr. Dodd for F-250 Truck, we did a comparative analysis between purchasing the vehicle outright and a comparative analysis under the existing agreement we have with enterprise lease. And so with permission from this body, we would like to purchase the vehicle outright from the local Ford dealership. And the reason being is, is we can save the county almost $12,000 by purchasing the vehicle and not leasing it. And so as a result of that discrepancy, and I'll be glad to go into the details, and Mr. Smith will also provide the necessary details if you like, but the office, my office is undertaking a complete review of the enterprise agreement to see if it's in the financial best interest for us to be leasing vehicles as opposed to purchasing them and owning them. And if this is typical of what we can see going forward, we will be coming to you on a pretty regular basis that we should be purchasing these vehicles and not leasing them because it's to our advantage to do so. So I'm asking that this body approve the purchase of this vehicle, direct purchase, and I'll be glad to entertain any questions. And my apologies for not bringing that to Budget, it was an oversight on my part.
Well, the Mayor had mentioned this to me, and, you know, we were caught up in some other issues that night, but one thing I do need to know, what is the amount? And I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Absolutely. The amount of the purchase is $28,495. If we were to lease the vehicle, the leasing of the vehicle would be over $40,670. With a monthly lease of $835.46. That's not a good deal.
What was the total again?
I'm sorry?
$28,495, the total for the purchase of the vehicle.
I'm sorry, Mayor, you said it was, if I may, 835.46, a month of lease?
The monthly lease would be 835.46.
And then you said a total of?
Would be 50,000, well, including service fees and everything, the total finance would be $50,128 by the time you do everything. So we've got, and the reason is, is because interest rates are going up is a big part of this. And so a county that is, has a AAA bond rating, gentlemen and ladies, has no business financing a car, in my opinion. Now, I understand the need for bonding for school buildings and things like that, and we'll get to that soon enough, but with the cash flow we have and our availability to purchase vehicles, we don't need to give up the interest rate in order to save money because it doesn't work.
Okay, so the $28,495 is the purchase outright, and it was, but if we would lease it? I think I got confused.
Let me explain, let me clarify one thing tonight. The Mayor is not asking for any new money, he is asking to transfer within the Maintenance Department's budget. And one of the things we've done since I've been here and since the Mayor's been here is analyze these lease agreements as they come through. So as interest rates have risen, instead of paying a 3% interest rate or a 2% interest rate on a leased vehicle, we are now paying 7% or 8% or 9%. And so if we were to pay this vehicle off over three to four years, four years, this would be, we would end up spending over $50,000. If we buy it today, we can buy it outright for $28,495 and not have to pay all of the interest costs over the life of that lease. So, and we own the vehicle. Even after that $50,000, we still do not own the vehicle. So the Mayor is asking tonight, from this body, permission to do a transfer within the Maintenance Department's budget. And then this vehicle, if that transfer is approved, this vehicle is on state contract, so it would not have to be bid.
So normally, we lease our vehicles?
That started about two years ago?
Okay, yes. And so basically, Mayor Carr, you're asking permission not to lease, but to buy outright? Is that the gist of it?
Yes, and he's asking tonight essentially for a budget amendment, a transfer. If that transfer is approved, that subsequently gives him the authority in that line item to buy the vehicle.
And what we will be doing, Commissioner, is going forward, anytime a department, and I sent out an email this week saying, before you purchase or have a need to purchase a vehicle off the enterprise contract, please consult our office, and we will go out and look at what's available on state bid contract and see if we can get a better deal. If this is an example of the kind of savings we can produce for the county, I'll be coming to you, I'm sure, on other occasions saying, here's the comparative analysis. Will you approve us purchasing it outright so we can save the county 10, 15, 20,000? That's the point.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chairman. Other questions?
Let me try a resolution here. I move that we move $28,495 from the existing Maintenance Department funds or budget to allow them to purchase a truck for the amount of $28,495. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Maintenance Budget Amendment to purchase this new truck. Any questions? For this, we'll be on the board, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing I'd like to mention. I had also went to Michael, and lo and behold, the Mayor had beat me to, asking, what's going on with this? Because it doesn't look like it's something we need to be doing. But what I'm thinking is, we need to run this whole idea of leasing back to Budget. Give you a little heads up, why don't we start looking at that either? If we can't get it in in January, let's look at it in February as soon as possible. The other thing I wanted to mention, if I'm not mistaken, none of these guys can do any leasing unless you're, the Mayor's office signs off on it. Is that correct?
We hope so.
Well, my understanding is, you are a designated employee would have to sign off before any lease was made, so, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we need to stop that until it's discussed again, comes to Budget and back to this full commission.
I will say this, that is correct, but we've had a couple of occasions where enterprise delivered a vehicle, a couple of vehicles, prior to my signing off on it, and we had to return them. And so sometimes, they assume that when there's a need within a department for a vehicle, a justifiable and established need, they kind of get out over their skis a little bit, and they ship a vehicle here. We've had a couple of occasions where a couple of vehicles came from North Carolina, and we said, well, we're not accepting those because we found a better deal somewhere else, kind of thing. So you're correct. And honestly, I think it's a great idea for Budget to review this enterprise agreement to see, does it still have any advantage for the county?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner P. Probably didn't make myself really clear, but under other business, this truck business was to be brought up under other business since we were talking about Budget. And Commissioner P, Mayor Carr, wanted to go ahead and present it at this particular time, so that was under NA. So we'll move on. M2, Health and Education Committee, Chairman Phil Dodd.
Thank you, Chairman. Health Department was covered by Mr. Crumbry, so we can dispense with that. Community Care Report, the only thing I just wanted to share with y'all is, we had some questions from this body, those to community care about the lease, the history of community care. Those questions were answered at Property Management. And so I suggest you go to the minutes from the Property Management meeting, or perhaps Chairman McAdoo could speak to that. Board of Education Report, we covered budgets, so Mr. P took care of that. Another item on Health and Education is enrollment. Rutherford County, the enrollment number from our last conversation was 50,686 students. So we are continuing to grow. Yes, it's continued, it's continued on the 2% increase. And historically, since I got on Health and Ed in 10 years ago, we've been running that 2%, 2.5% probably for years.
2,000 students, he's motion.
Up 2,000, up 2,000. If I'm talking, I can't hear, so. And my last item I wanted to mention was that, just I want you to keep on your radar that we have three high school additions that are coming up, we're going to be going to the bond market for those. Just wanted to update you that the Smyrna High School, the plans are done for all three, or the plans are progressing, they're not to their full bid set of documents yet. The Smyrna High School will bid, it may make January the, but I think it may be a week or two late, so late January, early February will be the bid opening for Smyrna High School. Following that would be the bid opening for Riverdale High School, and that is anticipated in early January. And Oakland High School is a third set of plans that are progressing, expected for the second week of February. So be attuned to that. We had $137 million anticipated some months back, and so we'll get real numbers soon. And that concludes my report. Oh, the next meeting is January 24th, 2023 at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Chairman. Item M3, Property Management, Chairman Allen McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next meeting date is 21st, Wednesday, and we will have another tour starting at 3:30. We are meeting at the New Judicial Building, New Judicial Building. And then we'll leave there and step across the street to the Rutherford County Court Building, and from there on, our meeting will start at 5:30. We had toured last month, which was really, really good. We saw a lot, so we want to continue these tours, especially on the properties that we know that are coming up in the future for either expansion, maintenance, or whatnot to let the full commission know. Also, Chairman Dodd mentioned about the nursing home. Questions? We had a good conversation with our legal advisors there at our last meeting, but we are getting some more information from the Board of Directors for the nursing home, which will be presented at the next meeting.
Thank you. Chairman McAdoo, I think you said the next meeting was the 24th, that's next Wednesday? 21st, thank you. That is next Wednesday. And we'll tour the New Judicial Building at 3:30 and meet here for our committee meeting at 5:30. Thank you. M3, I'm sorry, M4, Public Safety Committee, Chairman Pettis Reed.
Our next meeting will be this coming Monday, December 19th at 5:30. We have several items to be discussed at that time. We are going to be discussing once again our public safety buildings at that time, going over some few items that we're needing to take care of some, I guess you'd say, house cleaning items and things of that type. Was by the Rockville Building today, they were in the process of pouring driveways, sidewalks, and doing those sort of things, but the interesting thing, it still doesn't have windows. So, you know, if you like the dark, you can come inside and see what they're doing, but it's causing them to get a lot of things done on the inside, so we're still waiting on those windows, so we can go forward with that. So it's moving right along. Also, same, having the same progress out towards Kettle in that building right there. But Monday, this coming Monday at 5:30.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. M5, Public Works and Planning, Commissioner Chairman Mike Kusch.
Thank you, Chairman. It's always easy for me to come right here, that way I don't have my back to you lovely people. Happy holidays, everybody. All right. On the December 6th Public Works and Planning Meeting, it was requested by particularly the newer members of this Public Works Committee about some information regarding the recent partnership with the City of Murfreesboro and Waste Away, one of the solid waste technologies that turns municipal solid waste into fuel. So Darren Gore sent me today an email, which was then passed on to you, so if you haven't looked at it, check your email box, because there is an important date coming next week that you're invited to. On Tuesday, December 20th, leaving the city parking garage lower level at 12:30, some members of the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission staff members of the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission staff are heading to Morrison, Tennessee, to the Waste Away facility to take a tour and to see what that is all about. You are invited, and I need to know, or Bishop Wagner needs to know, who is interested in doing that, so they can get you a spot on the bus, all right? In that email, there is also information, a presentation that Darren Gore gave to the city council in regards to the Waste Away's moving towards their gasification. Let me make sure I say that right. No, I'm sorry, gasification is not the right word. Renewable natural gas program, all right? There is also a YouTube link that describes that, as well as the whole Waste Away concept. So for those of you who want to know what the city's doing and want to learn more about that, you can come to the tour, you can look at the YouTube, and read the reports that Aaron has attached to that email. So that's coming up quick next Tuesday for the tour, for the field trip. And our Public Works and Planning next meeting, to my knowledge, is shortly after the holiday, January 3rd, in this room at 5:30. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Item M6, Steering Legislative and Government, I'm sorry. Commissioner Johnson.
Not to put you on the spot, Mr. Kus, but my motion in Public Works was to have Waste Away come.
They are coming up for our January 3rd meeting as well.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Item M6, Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee, Chairman Craig Harris.
Commissioners, we're, our steering committee is bringing to you a change in the Private Act concerning our juvenile detention board. There are three areas that we are addressing. The first one is, we're wanting to move the meeting of this from the Juvenile Detention Center to the courthouse. The second is, we want to include two new members on this board. And the third is, the county commission will have the authority to confirm any actions from the board as to the director. Am I right on that? Okay. I'm going to read, this is on SharePoint, this is very long, I'm going to read the first part of it, and you can go to SharePoint and see anything else on that. Resolution requesting amendments to the Rutherford County Board of Juvenile Detention Centers Act of 2022 Private Act, whereas at its regular scheduled session on March 17th, 2022, the Rutherford County Commission approved resolution requesting passage of a private act to establish the Rutherford County Board of Juvenile Detention Centers Commissioners and corresponding proposed private act. Whereas the Tennessee Legislature considered and approved the Rutherford County Commission's proposed private act, subsequently assigning it to Private Act Chapter Number 65, entitled the Rutherford County Board of Juvenile Detention Centers Commissioners Act of 2022. Whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that the Tennessee General Assembly amend the private act and described herein. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to approve a resolution requesting amendments to the Rutherford County Board of Juvenile Center Commissioners Act. Any questions? I'll be on the board for this, so if you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I have two things on meeting, our next meeting will be January the 4th at 5:30 and here, oh, that's a Wednesday, so it'll be on January 4th. The delegates, we will meet with all the delegates here on January 17th at 6 o'clock, and if you have any questions, please email them to me or get with me personally so that we can go over them, and I need to get questions to them at least a week in advance. Other than that, Merry Christmas. Thank you, and see you soon.
You're great.
Let me remind everyone that meeting on the 17th is, we usually have an annual meeting with our legislative delegation, and this is a called Steering Committee meeting. Other business, we've already taken care of the maintenance budget amendment, and it gets us down to the very end. I'd like to tell Kathy, you don't have to put my supper in the microwave, I'll be home in time for supper tonight, honey. I'd like to take this opportunity to wish all of you guys a very Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. It's pleasure, it's been a pleasure working with you and seeing the way you operate, I am, continue to be impressed, and I'm very proud of what we're doing here in Rutherford County. Once again, Merry Christmas. Anyone have anything?
I'm going to tell Kathy to hold on. No, I'm kidding. I had to say this, and I'm glad Doug DeMoss is not here, so that I could say it without him being here. My fifth year as Commissioner, I served eight years on VZA. The planning department as a whole, under Doug's leadership, the engineering department as a whole, under Mike Hughes' leadership, has been a godsend. They are just phenomenal, they've helped so much, and in my opinion, they make this county a better county and make our jobs as commissioners easier. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Let me kind of chime in there and say they're dealing with some difficult decisions and have been for a while, and will continue to deal with difficult decisions, and they'll pass those final decision-making process along to us with good information and good recommendations. Thank you, Commissioner Rutherford. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Chairman Reed.
Commissioners, I've placed these postcards on some of your desks out there, all of them. These are actually from the Historical Society. If any of you remember Appletons that used to be over here in the old Delbridge Building, they were a frame shop. Well, they went out of business, and as a historical society, anything anybody wants to get away is junk. It shows up in our building. But they brought us some boxes of these, and they've been sitting there, and I saw these, I said, I'm going to bring these to the commission. I just think they're quite unique as a postcard, the picture of the courthouse on there at Christmas time, and I just wanted to pass them around for y'all at this time of the year and thought you might enjoy them.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Beverly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I'm not mistaken, it's Commissioner Irvin's birthday today, is that correct?
Yeah, not that easy.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. Well, happy birthday, sir.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Commissioner Irvin. Happy birthday to you.
I might offer that singing for the folks at home.
We digress. Anyone else?
Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Oliver.
Yes, I want to say Merry Christmas to everyone, and thank you for the gifts and cards. I want to say to our public and to our youth during our break, please be safe, enjoy your time, but please be safe. As a former educator, one of the things I often did was pray that when we had these breaks, whether it was winter break, summer break, that our children would come back to school, because kids can be kids. But let's be safe, and everyone have a wonderful holiday season.
Prayer's a good thing. Commissioner Goats.
On a serious note, Mr. Chairman, would like to inform the distinguished mayor that the paper towel dispenser in the men's room has malfunctioned. If you could look at that, certainly, and Merry Christmas.
You have contacted the appropriate person to handle that. Commissioner James.
I had a follow-up question I wanted to ask Chairman Dodd over there for about on the education. We saw today how we're dominating in sports, but I'd like to know if we have any stats for the subjects, the math, science, English, kind of where we stand across the grades on that. I just don't see them, or where, you could point me to look and get that information.
Perhaps if you would speak to Dr. Sullivan afterwards, he could direct you to the appropriate website, and if we could put that on our budget, on our agenda for upcoming months to, we can rotate statistics. That might be another item that we could look at on a regular basis.
Anything else? Commissioner Johnson.
I'd like to make Wayne feel just a little bit better. If you're feeling your age, guess what, dude? I was 20 years old when you were born. And I'm still getting around rather well.
Okay, okay, knock it off. Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Chairman. Mine is a little bit of a serious note, just want to make sure for public service announcement, I did confirm with Director Cumby, for the North Rutherford County residents, those free flu shots are not only available at the Murfreesboro Health Department, but it's very important that for the North then, they're also there for the same full schedule as the Murfreesboro location at the Smyrna location in North Rutherford County. So I want to be sure everybody knows that, because flu is rising and that those shots are provided free of charge.
Thank you. Last call. We're adjourned. Merry Christmas.